Don't want to pay big university prices for a great education? Not sure if your college material...
If I might have your attention, I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. The April 17th, 2014 Meeting of the Board of Trustees, welcome to everyone. The first item on our agenda as usual is public comment, and I have two cards. First, Jordan Tally. Mr. Tally, if you have a handout for us, okay, and then if you'll go to this microphone, that way we can hear and see you. And I would tell you and also the next speaker, we have a three-minute limit if possible.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Jordan Tally, 28-year-old student at the Northeast Campus. What I've handed you started out as an essay for my English class, and then it turned into something I felt very passionate about as far as credibility. What it turned into is a petition amongst the students. I have 434 signatures regarding my proposal to reform the loose-leaf textbook policies currently at our campus, I imagine the other campuses as well. Currently, the loose-leaf textbooks, though I think they were a good experiment, you know, as far as they weigh less, so people who have tons of books in their bag every day, it helps on their back, they have back problems, some of the older students we have, I know that they like these. However, the problems that I've found is that we're not able to rent these, which takes away a very affordable option for textbooks for the students. We're also not able to resell them to the bookstore. So at the end of the semester, when normally we had that little bit of light at the end of our financial tunnel, and being students, you know, we have the task of going to school full-time per financial aid guidelines, we also have to work full-time. Some of us, like myself, are parents, and we need every penny that we can. So with these textbooks, the main problem being the rental and the buyback, as well as not being able to refund them unless they're in the original packaging, these have been very financially detrimental to the student body, where a figure, you know, take two or three books a semester, that's, say, $25 per book through the buyback, that's around $75 that the student could have back in their pocket, which isn't a whole lot, but it's a little bit that helps. My proposal to you guys is for us to somehow come up with a compromise on how to maybe better utilize these and have policies in place that will allow us better financially affordable options for the student body as a whole. I do have the petition, I can pass around if you'd like. And this, I've only got over 400 signatures, I wanted to get more, but really I only had Monday and Tuesday to get signatures, so I had a very big response. I had maybe 35 on, you know, Thursday and Sunday from two classes I have, and then maybe 20 today, but the student body is very, very behind me on this, and a lot of people express the same concerns, that they like the weight issue, but they don't like the fact that they cost the same as hardback and paperback equivalents, and we don't have the other financial options at the end of the semester. So that's really all I have. Like I said, the essay that you have is what started out in my English class, and it goes into the argument much further, so thank you for your time.
We will refer this to the chancellor, and she will see that the suggestion gets into the appropriate hands. Thank you for your efforts. And our next speaker, Dr. Leah Tarwater.
Good evening. I'm here this evening to express my gratitude for allowing the adjuncts to continue teaching for classes this summer. There were adjuncts who had already turned down classes at other colleges, but now they have the security of their TCC classes. There are also many students who needed to take classes this summer in order to transfer to a university in the fall. Now, they will not have to worry about class sections being cut. I know that you and the administration were thinking about these students when you decided to reverse your earlier decision, and I thank you for this. When I spoke to you last month, I mentioned that the lack of communication between the administration and adjuncts is an issue many of us are concerned about. I want to let you know that as adjuncts, we are trying to do our part to correct this. We are forming an adjunct association with the goals of improving communication with the administration. We also see a role for our organization helping adjuncts to be successful in the classroom by mentoring new adjuncts and providing a voice to adjunct faculty. We plan to meet once a semester to discuss what is going on at TCC, how it impacts the adjunct faculty, and how we can contribute to the mission of Tarrant County College. Our hope is to have mentor adjuncts on each campus who volunteer to help new hires with tasks as simple as where to find their roster to more complicated issues of classroom management. The morale of 65% of the faculty is very important to the success of our students and the college, and we believe that through the development of an association, we will be able to improve the morale of adjuncts and our effectiveness in the classroom. So again, thank you from the students and from the adjuncts for your time and for restoring our summer classes.
Thank you, Dr. Tarwater, and your friend. And we appreciate you following up with your acknowledgements.
I try normally not to comment on public statements, but I feel like in support of our campus presidents, I must comment this time, because I want Dr. Tarwater and others to know that the campus presidents run a very good faculty orientation for all of our adjuncts, where they do learn how to maneuver through Tarrant County College District. And I believe that they are always available, if not the presidents themselves, their staff members to work with the adjuncts. And of course, adjuncts work primarily with department chairs and some with divisional deans, so I just, I had to say for the record, so that people understand that we do have a really good support system in place, we welcome all comments from our adjuncts, and we certainly appreciate your interest. And the other thing I'll say, I don't know what kind of information was out there, I'm not sure anything was actually restored. I believe perhaps that was just some misinformation that was getting to adjuncts about that, but we're pleased that you're pleased, and we thank you so much for the work that you do on behalf of our students.
The next item on our agenda is a presentation on student access and success, and we'll start with South Campus. Dr. Jordan?
Thank you, Dr. Jordan. And before Dr. Jordan gets into his presentation, I have the very distinct pleasure and honor of presenting Lori King Nelson. And Lori, if you will come to the front, please, so that they can get the full benefit of watching your great face and your expression as I read all these wonderful things about you. Welcome to our board meeting. Lori King Nelson was married at 16 and spent the next 38 years raising her four children and six nieces and nephews while traveling the world as a military wife. She coached youth sports and helped other service families cope with the difficulties of constant military relocation and deployment of their service member. And in 1988, her family received the Great American Family Award for the Pacific region from President Reagan while stationed in Japan. After spending her life caring for her family, she had no work skills to get a job at 52 years of age. Her children and son-in-law encouraged her to return to school for two reasons. One, to get a degree which would help her find employment, and two, to realize the dream she had put off while raising her family. Today, Lori has been accepted to Texas Christian University and Texas Wesleyan University, and plans to transfer after graduating from TCC in May, and I look forward to shaking your hand, to pursue degrees in sociology and comparative religion. Her goal is to attain a PhD in sociology of religion and create an organization which will educate others on religious and cultural differences. Last week, Lori was one of 85 students nationally to be named a 2014 Jack Kent Cooke Scholar. The Jack Kent Cooke Foundation's undergraduate transfer scholarship provides up to $30,000 per year to each of approximately 85 deserving students selected annually, making it the largest private scholarship for community college transfer students in the country. Each award is intended to cover a significant share of the students' educational expenses, including tuition, living expenses, books, required fees for the final two years necessary to receive a bachelor's degree. Our very, very, very special congratulations to our 2014 Jack Kent Cooke winner, Lori King Nelson. And there are two of her proud professors in the back. Where are you? Paul Bonero, where's Paul? Paul was supposed to have been here.
Yeah.
He's the PTK advisor, as well as Armando Verderell, who is the Associate Professor of History.
Yeah, they're not here.
They're not here?
No.
Well, my note says they were gonna be here, so tell them I missed them.
I will.
Okay, so Lori, again, congratulations. We are very, very proud of you, and I know your family is also very proud of you. Thank you so much. Now, Dr. Jordan will present Partnerships for Student Success, the Generation Hope Program.
Chancellor Hadley, Ms. Appleman, members of the board, it is my pleasure to introduce to you two members of the South Campus staff, Ms. Gladys Emerson, who is Vice President for Continuing Education, and Mr. Jonathan Davis, who is Coordinator of Community Outreach. They're gonna talk to you about one of the P12 initiatives and partnerships that exist across this college and on South Campus. This particular initiative focuses on middle-school kids. It focuses on the Generation Hope Laptop Program. This is a program that was developed and founded as a 501(c)(3) organization by Commissioner Roy Charles Brooks, and was recently adopted by TCC and the South Campus. So I invite Ms. Emerson and Mr. Davis to come forward. They're gonna tell you more about Gen Hope and what that program does to promote student success here at TCC. They'll also introduce to you some of the students in that program. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jordan. Chancellor Hadley, President Appleman, and members of the board, we're extremely pleased and proud to be able to come to you tonight to talk about the Generation Hope Laptop Program. As you've just heard from our president, that the program was founded by Commissioner Roy Charles Brooks in 2009. And Commissioner Brooks actually amassed a rather large network of individuals that consists of folks representing foundations, corporations, professional associations, numerous volunteers, and of course, area institutions of higher education, including Tarrant County College. The purpose of this, in conversation with Commissioner Brooks, of course, he has lots to say, but to kind of condense that, the commissioner wanted to really take a look and examine ways to alleviate the dropout rate in Tarrant County, to reduce it, because at the time of his research, the dropout rate was somewhere about 7.5% annually. He was also very concerned about bridging the technology gap that exists among certain students within not just Tarrant County, but nationally. The other thing that was very important to the commissioner was to make sure that this program really worked hard to target kids who perhaps would never consider STEM as a curriculum or choice, who would never see themselves in STEM fields. So he took a very close look at targeting Title I schools, making sure that he targeted minority or underrepresented groups, particularly in areas where girls, for example, were underrepresented, as well as looking at schools where there was a high free and reduced lunch status. The mission of Generation Hope Laptop Program, Inc., and that is from the 501(c)(3) as it was originally founded, was to nurture, empower, and develop the whole child by leveraging math, science, and technology with computer involvement and global awareness to brighten their life possibilities. Now, what led to the conversations and discussions that would transition this program to TCC, South Campus? Well, that began about a year ago in conversation with the commissioner and looking at things like Vision 2015 and talking with our president, President Jordan, after he came to South Campus about his vision for our campus, and the commissioners started to cite things that we all agreed with, that the Generation Hope Laptop Program and its mission was very consistent with our mission and our goals and objectives on South Campus, to promote a college-going culture and to make sure that we prepare students that are college-ready. And the other thing, that we were one of the original partners for the program, preparing the students for the various competitions that they engage in through the summer enrichment component that was designed by Alicia Jones, the Director of Continuing Education, in consultation with Shannon Fletcher, who was the Assistant to the Commissioner. And then the other thing, this is a program that really needs to scale up, as we know with all the conversations that we are having with our various school districts, and he saw this as an opportunity for us to be able to scale up the program based on what was happening already on South, because we had also initiated a robotics camp to allow another pathway for articulation for these students from the eighth grade into high school. To give you a quick glimpse of some of what the, who the students are, what they look like in Generation Hope, this is just a snippet from their database, the student profiles. This year, 341 students were enrolled, and as you can see the breakdown there for sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. We have students that represent the world, United Nations of students, 35% of African descent, as you can see, 20% are Caucasian, equally Latino, Hispanic at 35%, as well as a representation of multicultural, multi-ethnic students. We have three school districts that we are working with, the Fort Worth Independent School District, there are nine schools, in Crowley, two schools, and Everman, two schools. This semester, all of the legal transactions were completed to move Generation Hope to TCC, along with other things such as a large inventory of equipment that we are attempting to house with more than 500 laptops, an enormous network of partners, which you will get a glimpse of a little bit later in this presentation, along with other kinds of resources. I am very pleased to introduce Jonathan Davis, who is the Coordinator for this program, and Jonathan is going to give you some additional insight into the various components that we have associated with Generation Hope.
Chancellor Hadley, Ms. Appleman, and members of the board, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you all today about a program that is very near and close to my heart. I've worked with the organization, and so I've been adopted along with the organization since 2010. I wanted to provide a little bit of information about the components of the program and the services that we provide throughout. I wanted to provide a little bit of information about the components of the program and the services that we provide throughout. We have three primary components for the program, and those are the after-school component, the monthly field trips, and summer enrichment. We also have one component, which is an optional component that we have students participate in, which is competitions through the Texas Alliance of Minorities in Engineering. Primarily, what we offer is the after-school program, which offers twice a week each one of our school sites, Mondays and Wednesdays, or Tuesdays and Thursdays. Now, this differentiates from what would be a after-school tutoring program, where say the students would come after school and we would, you know, kind of help the students with the work that they have at their school. Those programs are great, but what we actually provide is a structured, ongoing curriculum throughout those three years that the students are in the program, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, that aligns very closely with the work that they're doing in their actual schools and that at the same time advances the students throughout the next grade levels, particularly in STEM. For our, every month, and our program starts in October, ends in May. Every month, we take our students on a field trip at various sites. As you see here, these are some of the sites that we provide field trips for. Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension, or the Tarrant County AgriLife Extension, provides a field trip for the students actually at TCC South Campus, in which the students learn about healthy living and lifestyles from the Tarrant County AgriLife Extension staff. In January of each year, our sixth graders actually learn the Microsoft Office Essentials, Word, PowerPoint, and Excel, and actually go through a basic level certification program that the Neely Business School at TCU offers. At the same time, just this, just this month, actually, the American Petroleum Institute offered a program, The Wonders of, The Magic and Wonders of STEM, in which the students learn a very interactive approach on how to learn and incorporate STEM into their everyday life. One thing I'll say before moving very much further is, we may not have mentioned it already. Everything in the program that's offered, everything that we have from the after-school program to the monthly field trips, as well as the summer enrichment, which I'm just about to get into, as well as, one thing we may not have mentioned as well is, it's called Generation Hope Laptop Program because we provide laptops to all the students. I left one just over here on the corner. And these are the laptops that the students are provided with. They have all the same capabilities as a regular laptop, and they're also damage-proof, spill-proof, and they also turn into tablets if you were to turn them around. We provide these all to the students free of charge, so the students and the families don't pay anything for that. Along with those, we also offer summer enrichment with the new Texas Pre-Freshman Engineering Program, which is run by the University of Texas San Antonio, which is a comprehensive summer program for seven weeks, in which the students actually earn high school credit while they're in middle school. And then, once they're a senior in high school, they actually have the ability to earn college credit. And this program, again, is free of charge to those students. Lastly, we have Texas Alliance of Minorities in Engineering, which is one of the two agencies that run the state math and science competitions. Our students compete at the Dallas Regional Competitions, and each year, we've had several students placed at both the regional as well as the Texas State, Texas State level. And along with that, for TAME, as you see, 2012, we had six students that placed, and what says regional champion means they placed first, second, or third for, I mean, for essentially the Dallas region. We had six students place first, second, or third in Dallas, and then two at state. Last year, we had eight students regional, and then three at state. And this year, we had fifteen students placed at regional, but the state winners are still pending, because this was just actually last weekend. Along with that, we have some other programs that we offer, I kind of mentioned for TCU. There is one more, there's one more thing that I wanted to mention, actually, and Ms. Emerson probably doesn't know about this, because I just left it on her desk this morning. The Texas Alliance of Minorities in Engineering announced, in collaboration with the University of Texas, Texas Tech, and Texas A&amp;M, that students that participated in Texas Alliance of Minorities in Engineering had placed at either or the local or state level are eligible for scholarships through each of those universities just by participating in Texas Alliance of Minorities in Engineering, which, again, is free of charge to all of our students. Here you see, there's a, we have a very comprehensive list of donors and sponsors and partners that we've had for the program throughout the last several years, since 2009 when we were founded. And this is the, this is the comprehensive list, this is part one, there's another list as well. But these are the, the list of donors, sponsors, and partners for the program. Some of our program partners and sponsors work specifically with certain schools, whereas others work comprehensively with all of our schools. For example, Devon Energy Corporation is the sponsor for Benbrook Middle School, which is one of our particular schools, whereas the A.M.G. Carter Foundation works with all of our schools. And these are the rest of the... And that is all I have for you today. Thank you. Yes, we do. Do you want to mind if I continue?
No, if you're not through, of course.
I'm sorry about that. We actually have our students here today. So, I passed it to the next slide, and I looked at it like, I'm not finished. We actually, we actually have three of our students here today. Daniel Ku wasn't able to make it, but we'd have three of our students, Kiara Washington, Jacoby Green, and Maya Rico, who are over here, if you all don't mind standing up.
Come to the front.
Or come to the front. I made the presentation, so I'm not sure how I didn't know. Just want to provide a little bit of information about each of these students, so if we move on. Go ahead and, actually, yeah, I was gonna skip Daniel, because he wasn't able to attend. Kiara Washington's a seventh grader at HF Stevens Middle School, and she actually, just at the last regional competitions in Dallas, which was two months ago, she placed first for Dallas for seventh grade math. Outside Generation Hope, she's an avid student, National Junior Honor Society, and received the Outstanding Leadership Award. Her short-term goal is to graduate, is to graduate in the top ten percent and receive both Associate's and Distinctive Diploma upon graduation. Next, I have Jacoby, who is an eighth grader at the YM La, the Young Men's Leadership Academy. Two years ago, he placed third overall in the Dallas Regional Competition. Outside of Generation Hope, in 2012, is a Fort Worth ISD Board of Trustees Recognized Student. And his goal to graduation, for graduating, is to finish successfully, learn more about math and science, and he wants to move, I don't know permanently, but I know he wants to live in Japan at some point and learn Japanese.
What is manga, we're asking? Want to make manga? Oh, okay.
It's a Japanese comic book.
Next up, Maya Rico's a seventh grader at Benbrook Middle School, and she also participated in the Dallas Regional Competitions, in which she placed first as well. She is also Benbrook Middle School Student Body President, participates in WIZ Quiz, and her short-term goal is to finish eighth grade successfully and graduate high school in the top ten percent. Now, that is all. If you all have any questions for myself or the students.
Board members?
I, and I am sure that we're finished this time.
Based on what I'm looking at, I'm assuming these are high school students?
No, this is a middle school program, so we're sixth or eighth grade. We have, I didn't really mention most because we only have so much time. We have another program, it's called Gen Next, and it's for our students that have already graduated. So, our program itself is sixth through eighth grade, but we kind of have a not as structured program for the students that graduate, in which they occasionally go on trips and work with the other students that are still in the program, but they're sixth through eighth graders. Yes, so the program now is actually under Tarrant County College, and it's housed at South Campus. We operate on the sites of the schools, so each of these students are at different schools, HF Stevens, YM La, and Benbrook. And there's also eight other schools that we operate at, and we have instructors that go out to these schools two days a week that provide the STEM curriculum for the students, and we also take the students on those trips every month.
Through the schools, I mean, very wonderful programs, but I guess... But I guess my question is, how do we, at the end of these programs, how do we determine how well we have done? Is there a component, evaluation component, that we can see to determine how really effective these programs are working?
Yes, we have an evaluative tool that we actually have provided from Texas Alliance of Minorities in Engineering, which provided beginning of the end of year. Now, it's something for the students not to look forward to, but that's actually what we provide, which uses the evaluative tool.
Because I've seen a lot of wonderful programs. I mean, but again, the thing is, are we making a difference? That's, that's where I am. Wonderful programs, everything that we're doing is nothing new, is maybe a different program. But again, the end part of that is, are we making a difference? And that's the part that I'm interested in. So, again, congratulations. I would like to see that when that begins to happen.
And I'll, and I'll say, it's, the, our biggest data point that we want to look at is our, well, two things. Are students graduating from high school through our program, and are they attending college? At this point, our, since our program started four years ago, our oldest students are in tenth grade right now. So, that's still something that's to be determined.
And you know, something that I had talked, I had talked about when I went to a conference in New York was, it's great that they're in college, but how successful are they being in college? I mean, that's a little step we need to take a little further, because anyone can go to college. But how are they, are they succeeding? I think that's a component sometimes that we kind of overlook. But I'd like, I would love to see the results at some time, because I think these are wonderful opportunities for our students. The earlier we reach them, the better, but I would love to see evaluation outcomes. Based on empirical data. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Winnet, and let the students stay there for just a minute. Reginald's telling me we need to get a photo of your good-looking faces. Let me give you just a little bit more background for this program. Tarrant County College has been involved with Generation Hope Laptop since its very beginning, pretty much since its beginning. And we had offered through our Continuing Education Program to take these students onto our campus during the summer and merge them into what we were already doing with College for Kids. And we gave them space in that program pretty much for free, based upon availability. And so, we've worked consistently with the students from then. I was very, very impressed with what I saw happening in the program, because you see, it's a STEM-based program, science, engineering, technology, and math. And you know what kind of issues we have in trying to get our students through the math curriculum here at Tarrant County College. So, I was very attracted to the program. And then, I went on a trip where the Generation Hope Laptop students were on this called STEM Train. I was blown away with what I saw, with what those students knew, with how they presented themselves, with how their enthusiasm and all of that. So, when Commissioner Brooks asked me if Tarrant County College would have any interest in the program and taking the program over, because it is a pretty intensive program that takes a lot of work. And he knew that Tarrant County College has the infrastructure to make this work, and I knew that we need those students. We need them in the sixth grade, and the seventh, and the eighth grade, and connect with them through high school. So, I said yes, and then Dr. Jordan did all the heavy lifting on it. He worked with them for quite a while to get the program transitioned. And you saw some of the funders that are up there. And just yesterday, in a meeting with Superintendent Walter Dansby, we talked about Generation Hope Laptop Program, and Dr. Jordan had a very specific question, because I had indicated that we really wanted these students, but we really couldn't take on all that extra money, like transportation, getting them from their schools to us, buying all those laptops, and we still needed the, the foundation to continue to work on that part. And Mr. Dansby assured Dr. Jordan yesterday, all three have agreed to continue doing what they were always doing with the transportation and all that, and the food, and the food. So, it's a cooperative effort. Something else we can put down is something that we're doing with the community, and especially to help the students. The, the thing I think that attracted me the most about it was the early start, starting in sixth grade, and then staying with those students all the way through high school. Actually, the, the measurement should be very simple. And I was gonna ask a question about the eighth graders, because I see a red flag. You have fewer students in eighth grade than you have in the others, so tell me what that's about.
We, not all of our schools started at the beginning, so as we grow schools, we grow grades. So, there's two schools we have that don't have an eighth grade yet, because we only started them two years ago. Morningside, for example, only has sixth grade. And, God, there's one more school, we only have two. Forest Oak, Forest Oak, we only have seventh grade four. So, and there's one other site that came up just off the top of my head. Glencrest, yes, Glencrest, we only have sixth grade four, because as, as we, you know, start those schools, we go grade by grade.
The other thing I'll say too is, Ms. Emerson has integrated this program into our Family Empowerment Program too, and so, it's all working together. It, it has a lot of promise.
While we're taking the picture, I was taught to, Ms. Winnet, that, you know, we took a pledge to be data-driven. I think that's what you were saying, is that a lot of programs will feel good, but we, as these kind of programs develop, we don't want to see the data, see how they do, how they compare to their peers. So, that's what we do, I hope.
Shelley, scroll back. Did I see where one of the students is going to receive his or her Associate of Arts degree along with the high school graduation? But, good. Think of us the first one, Kiara. Yeah, there it is. We wish you well and continued success, all three of you, and your friend who's not here. Thank you, Ms. Emerson and Mr. Davis.
Well, thank you so much for being here tonight.
All right. Mr. Heath, Mr. Greenhill, and I went to Santa Fe last month to a Board of Trustees Institute, Dr. Joy Gates Black Chaperondis. And Mr. Heath's going to give a brief report about what we learned there.
We're actually gonna start with Dr. Joy Gates Black.
Thank you, Mrs. Appleman. Chancellor Hadley, members of the board. Every year, the University of Texas Community College Leadership Programs holds a Board of Trustee Institute for community colleges in Texas. And for the last four years, members of our board have attended the institute. I've had the privilege of going with, going for three of the four years with our board members and accompanying them. One of the most important things that we do in preparation for the institute is we begin to look at data, as we're becoming more data-driven. The first part of the institute is for board members to look at data on their specific college and to dialogue about what that data means and how they might use that data to form next steps or plans in terms of when they return to their institution. So, I'll share just a little bit of the data that we looked at this year. The slide that you're looking at shows at Tarrant County College the number of students who completed developmental education in a four-year timeframe. And you can see, we looked at 2010, 2011, and 2012. And you can see the changes and increases in that last column. The other thing that this chart shows is the success points that we would have achieved in all of those years, based upon the performance-based funding model. And this slide shows the number of students who passed their first college-level course. And as we were looking at that, we are really working to make sure that our students complete their developmental education before they get into college-level courses. So, you see, lower numbers may be in that right... So, you see lower numbers maybe in that right column. We kind of strategized and talked about why there might be lower numbers there, because we are really serious about helping our students to be well-prepared before they go into college-level And this last slide, it talks about the number of students who have completed 15 and 30 hours at the institution, at the same institution. So, as you can see, we have continued to go up in many ways, and we haven't gone up, and I wondered about that, and we talked about it. And we're thinking, because we are trying to keep our students here to complete their Associate's Degree, to complete the core, and we're doing a good job of that, because we're seeing increases in completion rates. Now, after looking at the data, one of the things that the board members and I would do would be to talk amongst ourselves about Tarrant County College and the work that we're doing, and how the board might come back and do the next steps in terms of their role in student success. There were also opportunities for board members to hear from other college board members as they talked about what their institutions were doing. At the end of the institute, or by the end of the institute, all of the board members needed to have come up with a plan for next steps. And Mr. Heath, you're going to talk about the next steps for Tarrant County College?
Yes, we came up with three, we came up with three priorities and some action steps under that, of course, you can read these, but the first was to ensure that all TC leaders, including board members, faculty, and staff are engaged in and pay continuous support, attention to the progress on the student's success agenda. And the action steps under that are to revise the TCC mission statement to reflect our emphasis on student success. And secondly, to demonstrate the board's support for changes that are being made by the college. The second main priority is to foster an environment where a culture of evidence, including longitudinal data and cohort tracking of disaggregated data, and inquiry is pervasive in the institution with strong support from institutional research. And our action items under that are, number one, to incorporate a brief report of progress relating to student success agenda at each and every board meeting, to establish a three to five key performance indicators of success for tracking purposes, so that we can follow those. We'll share data on areas where TCC is successful, as well as where improvements are needed, and in those areas that need improvement, to provide explanations and strategy for increasing our success. Thirdly, is to schedule presentations to the board on the success and/or progress, including relevant student outcome data on the following, our math emporiums, innovation forums, success coaching, and our critical thinking QEP implementation. Next is to schedule presentation to the board on our data dashboard. And lastly, is to review the American Association of Community Colleges' voluntary framework for accountability to determine its applicability to Tarrant County College. The third main priority is to support a structure where planning and budgeting, including the reallocation of resources, are aligned with the vision, priorities, and strategies of a student's success agenda. Our action items under that are to schedule reviews annually and to start of every semester of the strategic plan, our Vision 2015, and evaluate how well TCC is carrying out that plan and associated strategies, and make modifications as needed. And lastly, is to ensure a new multi-year strategic plan, Vision 2020, or whatever we call it, is aligned with the new mission statement, budget allocation process, student's success agenda, and the institutional planning process. And I think our priorities were the best, don't you? Yes.
Any questions or comments from other trustees? If not, thank you, Mr. Heath, thank you, Dr. Gates-Black. We will move on to item number four, approval of the minutes of the March 20th meeting. Motion to approve. Ms. Vandergriff? Seconded by Mr. Carter. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Committee reports, audit, and finance. Mr. Carter?
Well, the Audit and Finance Committee did meet. Basically, we looked at three areas. We had two audits. The first was a required, I think every other year, audit of the information and computer systems that we have, make sure that we're in compliance with assortment of state requirements for higher education, and also to have an outside party look at our system, see how vulnerable it is. There were quite a few issues, which we'll be discussing, and some of the polymers have been corrected already, I understand. There was an audit of our engineering and technology program, they passed that with flying colors. And then, we basically took a look at next year's work schedule, and we're going to audit, basically, the exchanges between eight of our major suppliers of goods or services, and then also a couple of our, that'd be top 50, eight of the top 50, and then also just a couple picked at random from smaller suppliers. And that's basically what the Audit Committee did last, well, it's last week.
Any questions? Governance Committee, address the agenda as you see it tonight, institutional planning. Ms. Vandergriff?
Good evening. The institutional planning meeting was this Tuesday, this past Tuesday, with Trustee Heath and Trustee Gwen Morrison, along with the chancellor. Nina Petty and her group presented a status report on the Performing Arts Center on the northeast campus. As we were discussing in that meeting, as the college makes a transition to the Innovation Forum, there was a feasibility study done on the Performing Arts in 2012. So, right now, we're blending that and transitioning that with an enhanced version through the Innovation Forum. So, we'll be looking to see that in completion, hopefully, in the very near future. We also made some recommendations for the board retreat in terms of agenda items in regards to P3s, so we'll look forward to that.
Comments, questions? 50th anniversary, Golden Jubilee. Dr. Morrison's making sure we say those two words.
Thank you, Ms. Appleman. Well, planning for the Tarrant County College Golden Jubilee celebration is progressing wonderfully well, and as is true with the history of the college, we have many wonderful ideas from lots of smart, energetic people, and we will be sharing those by word of mouth, through social media, through the website. All of the campuses are represented on the Golden Jubilee Celebration Committee, and I want to take this opportunity to ask all of the campus presidents to meet with their on-campus, to begin on-campus discussions before the end of this semester with their committee. And also, each and every one of you are an important part of the TCC Golden Jubilee Celebration, so we invite you to share your ideas and comments as we prepare to celebrate. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a hard-working Core Committee, and then we've invited quite a number of community people to join us, and they have, and have given us some really good suggestions, and we will meet with them again to brief them on some of the workings of the Core Committee. Item number nine, consideration and approval of blanket purchase, seven, sorry, I'm looking at one thing and reading off another. Consideration and approval of blanket purchase order with Warren Douglas Advertising for Media Buys. Mr. Gates?
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, trustees, Madam Chancellor. This is a continuation request for an increase on the blanket purchase order for the Media Buys with Warren Douglas Advertising. You recall, a few months back, Suzanne gave a fairly extensive presentation on our continuing strategic plan to roll out not only awareness, but to do branding, as well as campaigns to special markets. So, this is a continuation to do the second phase of those purchases, and we would ask your approval.
Motion to approve. By Mr. Heath, and a second. By Mr. Carter. Any discussion? Once again, you will not be surprised to hear me express concern with the purchase of billboards. I just have to say it. With all due respect for our PR communications team and the Warren Douglas firm. All those in favor, aye? Any opposed?
Ms. Appleman, might I add a note? I want you to think Golden Jubilee, when you talk with Warren Douglas, they need to begin to think how they'll include that in all of the media presence, and I know Suzanne has that on her brain, but I just want to get it in the record.
Madam President, I might also say, this afternoon, I saw the latest version of the rollout as a part of our branding campaign, and it is absolutely awesome. I think even you'll like it on a billboard, Ms. Appleman, once you see it. I think you will. They're very, very nice, and so we're looking forward to that. We have them, we'll show them later, we could put them up on the screen. But how many of you have seen us on CNN? Okay.
MSNBC.
And MSNBC, and also, we're places-
NPR.
NPR, NPR, that's right. Our public relations and marketing team is taking us places where we've never before threatened, so-
Including the Downtown Arts Festival?
That's right, that's right.
Suzanne, stand up, and who else was down there with you?
Margaret Lutton was her partner in crime on that.
You all get extra gold stars for that.
And they do, so thank you. She has all kinds, that's a good time, come show the shirt. How many people did you have walking around with that?
We had 300 young artists that were participating in the Young People's Art Fair that we were sponsoring, walking around for the weekend with our logo on their back, and then we had two, two and a half booths, an exhibit. We think we spoke to about 2,000 people, one-on-one, over the course of three days.
Wonderful.
We did have faculty turn out to do actual demonstrations, so we had a potter's wheel out there, we had artists, you know, painting, drawing, sculpting, and the kids were just transfixed, so it was an outstanding opportunity for us.
There were multiple booths down there. You had some informational, and I mean-
We did. Our main booth was at Main and Fourth Street, and that's where we spent a lot of time talking to folks individually, but passing out information on everything from Weekend College to College for Kids, to just our regular programs. Quite a lot of interest in our Continuing Ed program, so we had to hurriedly run to the office and get more information on that. Our secondary booth, where you see Toro, was in the young children, the Young People's Art area, and we had designed cut-out boards that say "I am College Material," so kids could come and poke their heads through, and even dogs had their heads in there. And then, we had these buttons that say "I am College Material" that we passed out, and that was really where we talked mostly about early college, high school, dual credit, and College for Kids.
And then, there was teardown in the rain on Sunday, right?
Yes, ma'am. Margaret and Noemi Vela and I braved the weather. One officer, he carried the flag while we were late, but it was great, it was great.
Thank you, thank you.
I have to pop in here as a board member for Downtown Fort Worth Inc., which is the organization that runs Main Street. I have to tell you, Suzanne is an absolute star, the bomb, they called her all kinds, she rocks. They think she is so great. I was at the Download Meeting for Festival and Events, I think, yesterday at Downtown Fort Worth Inc., and we were the talk of the town, because this was our first year to be involved in it, and really, they are hoping we come back, they want our performers to come, and so it was really great. Thanks to Suzanne for really having the-
Thank you so much.
And Ms. Vandergriff spent the weekend there, the whole weekend, for UTA, so she gets special recognition as well.
Absolutely.
Yes, good.
So, we were wondering, Suzanne, why you weren't, why you were not present at the Golden Jubilee Committee today, so you get a pass.
I can tell you why she wasn't there, is because I needed her to be with me.
It's okay, don't go there.
And I have, I have a number of faculty in the room who can tell you that she needed to be with me today, right, faculty? See, they're saying yes.
All right. Now, item number eight, consideration and approval of indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity, pool service authorization agreement with Jacobs Consultancy to provide commissioning services for South Campus Energy Technology Center. Ms. Petty?
Yes, we're asking for approval for this contract for $185,856. Of course, it's for the Energy Technology Center at the South Campus, for the important work of commissioning, and that's testing and inspecting integrated and technical building systems, so it's important, and we hope you will approve this contract.
Motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Mr. Heath, second. Dr. Morrison, any questions, discussion? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Item number nine, consideration and approval of contract with BaseCom Construction Services for construction of Math Emporium at Trinity River Campus, Trendy River Building. Ms. Petty?
Yes, we asked for approval for this. This is a district project for the Math Emporium at Trinity River for $497,770. This is the space where the Math Emporium currently is, and we're expanding it back what we call the elbow space, and it's about 5,000 square feet, and we hope you will approve this contract this evening.
Motion to approve. Dr. Morrison, second. Ms. Vandergriff, any questions, discussion? I would remind the audience again that we have had the material and memo information about these projects before us for several days, and so we have read and understand the implications. All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Item number 10, consideration and approval of contract with Lassiter, Inc. to install Schiller and Supporting Systems at Northwest Campus.
This one's for $292,647. And again, it's part of our infrastructure initiatives, and it's at the Northwest Campus, and we appreciate your approval.
Motion to approve. Mr. Heath, second. Mr. Carter, any discussion? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Item number 11, consideration and approval of by-board cooperative agreement with GCA Services Group to provide custodial services for Tarrant County College District.
Yes, this contract is a 32-month contract with two optional one-year extensions. It is for $11,934,988, and 81 cents, that's a mouthful, isn't it, not to exceed, and we hope you will approve this, so we can continue to have clean buildings.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve. Dr. Morrison, second. Ms. Vandergriff, any questions or discussion? Mr. Heath?
The $11,900, that's just for 32 months, and then the additional extensions are at what rate, comparative or?
Comparative, and if you ask more detailed questions, I can ask Mr. Vandergriff to come up.
Same price, yes, okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, that's my last item.
Mr. Marshall, consideration and approval of contract with Alucion to provide 24-hour central help desk services.
Thank you. The item before the board is probably one that will impact more people in the district than any other project I've brought forward. This will provide 24-by-7 live help desk support for all our students, faculty, and staff.
And board members?
Actually, from me, because now they call me, so. So, I, this is the type of support we tend to expect from our banks, our insurance companies, and our students, actually, when they take classes that extend into the evening, and our faculty are teaching courses that extend into the evening and the weekends, we need to have a support structure for them, and this will extend the good support that we have during the week into the every day, every night, every hour. So, the, there was an RFP that went out, Alucion was the successful vendor, the amount for $1,889,659 is for a three-year contract. This fiscal year, the amount is $464,569. We do have, at the request of the board, and with the great help of the purchasing staff, we incorporated some outs, so if we do not like the service, we're not committed to a three-year contract.
The board will recall, we had that concern at the last meeting and delayed the vote at that time, so that's why this is looking somewhat familiar. Motion to approve. Mr. Heath, second. Seconded by Dr. Morrison. Any questions or comments?
Does this also provide help during food periods? Yes, the one thing we always struggle with when we're providing support for ourselves- Yes, the one thing we always struggle with when we're providing support for ourselves is our staff doesn't increase when activity increases. So the beginning of the semester, at the end of the semester, when there's finals, and at January also. The company is providing us with a service-level agreement based on time, so it's up to them to hire the right number of staff at peak times. They do the service for about 100 colleges and universities, they're just higher-ed specific. So they do ramp up their staff during times of peak, because pretty much all the colleges and universities start in August and, you know, do a semester roll in and roll out. So they do, they do it just for peak.
Motion to approve? We already did that, all right, sorry. Ready to vote? Any other questions? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Mr. Carter? Item number 13. Mr. Marshall, consideration and approval of agreement with Pathway Communications for purchase and installation of audiovisual classroom equipment to upgrade 10 classrooms per campus at Northeast, Northwest, and South campuses.
Beginning last year, we started the project to add the classroom technology to the recycle, to the recycle of technology equipment. This is for, we're doing 10 classrooms per campus per year, and this is for the three campuses that you see listed there. The activity is bid out, and this is in our budget, so I ask for approval of this item.
Motion to approve? Mr. Carter, second by Mr. Heath. Any discussion, comments, questions? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Monthly financial report. Mr. McClendon?
Madam Chancellor, Mrs. Appleman, board members, good evening. I wanted to tell you that we will be now looking at expenditures, and we're looking, what we did is we're now on seven months, so we would, we should be at 58%. We will look at anything over 70%. So if you notice there, we looked at that 35%, and it stuck out, and we said, what could that be? Why would you have that in revenue? And the reason is, the revenue that's missing, it will be coming in this summer, it's college for kids. So everything that, as a new item will come up, we will show it to you, and we'll always, when we look at the total revenue, we're trailing very well at 84%. We get our money from our taxes, and our money from the coordinating board is coming in, so we're ahead of schedule on our revenue side. We can go to expenses, Ms. Birch. Now, if we look at our expenses, we should be at 58%. We're at 62, so we're thinking, we're trailing pretty good. It's not a bad, we think that's a good thing. There's nothing that we saw in the expenditures. What we do is we go every month, and every time something new appears, we will go it. We've covered everything, there's nothing out of the ordinary, but as always, we're happy to answer any question that you may have. We'll look at our investments now, and this month, we actually consumed $8 million in operations. That's where you'll see your revenue going from, I mean, your cash in your pools is going from 159 mil to 151. We did want to show you, for example, the market interest rate is starting to trail up a little bit more, and our benefits right now, if you look at those two investments, are sitting on 1.3 and 1.30, but this is on four-year investments. So the market is recuperating, not very aggressively, but it is coming in. If we look at our two rates, we're looking at the 13-week at a .4 better, and on our 26-week, .38. So I think it's a good performance within the, what we can do with the existing regulations and what the market provides. Any other comments or questions?
Thank you. Chancellor's report.
Thank you, Madam President, and board members. The first part of my report, I am very pleased to make two, well, one introduction and one presentation, and the first one is for Dr. Kelly Mills. There she is, there she is in person, and there she is on the screen. Kelly has recently joined the family of Tarrant County College as an assistant to the chancellor in my office, and she's going to have a very, very, very interesting stay with Tarrant County College. The position that she holds is one that was repurposed from another position at the college, and with all of the various things that we have going on, the various initiatives that call for so much interaction, a part of my time today with the faculty, JCC leaders, we talked primarily about communication or the lack thereof, and so much of that, the lack of communication at Tarrant County College, comes because we are so extremely large, and we are a very complicated institution, and I really needed somebody to help me stay abreast of all the different things that were going on, because everybody is doing her job very well, and sometimes we forget to tell the rest of us what we're doing, and that's going to be one of the things that she's going to be working with me on. Kelly previously served as trustee relations secretary at the Rhode Island School of Design in Providence, Rhode Island, that's where she came from when she came here, where she was the main administrative liaison between the board of trustees and the administration. Her experience also includes serving as the associate chief of staff at the University of North Carolina at Greensboro, as executive assistant to the provost of William Peace University in Raleigh, North Carolina, and as assistant to the chancellor for budget and planning at the University of North Carolina School of the Arts. She is a member of the board of directors for the National Association of Presidential Assistance in Higher Education, and serves on the board, a professional leadership group, at the Association of Governing Boards. She holds a Bachelor of Arts in Public Policy Analysis from the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. She has a Master's of Public Administration with a concentration in nonprofit management from the University of North Carolina at Greensboro, and she holds a Doctorate in Higher Education Leadership and Policy from Vanderbilt University. It is my distinct pleasure to introduce to you Dr. Kelly Mills, and if you will come to the podium while, we welcome you to Tarrant County College. That means you get to speak, yes, ma'am?
Indeed, it is a pleasure to be here at Tarrant County College. I was asked earlier today if it felt like home yet, and I responded by saying that it felt like home the day that I stepped on campus, but certainly it is a wonderful place to work. I'm very happy to be a part of the team, and I'm thankful for the opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kelly, and welcome. You notice I said I had one introduction and one presentation, because it is also my distinct pleasure to present to you Dr. Joy Gates Black in her new role as Vice Chancellor of Academic Affairs and Student Success. Dr. Gates Black joined Tarrant County College in 2010 as the Vice Chancellor of Student Success, and she was the one person who said to me, we can do this. I was talking about achieving the dream, and she has proved that we could do that. We've done it quite well under her leadership. In that capacity, she served as a Chief Student Services Officer responsible for district-wide support, including financial aid, admissions and records, college access, and community outreach in the college's trio, and Title III grants. She was also the person who got a Title III grant for us. It was the first time we've gotten one in the history of the college, to the tune of $2 million? How many dollars was it? I don't remember. It was a lot of money that we didn't have to, I think it was a $2 million grant. In addition to serving as the Vice Chancellor of Student Success, she also served as the interim president on the South Campus for almost a year. She is a seasoned educator with over 24 years of experience in higher education, working at both the community college and the university level. And before coming here, she's held several leadership positions, including a position as Vice President for Student Success and Enrollment Management at Eastfield College, as Dean of the Student Affairs at San Antonio College, as Dean of Equity and Diversity, and as Assistant Vice President of Administration at Los Angeles City College, as Assistant Dean at both the University of Redlands and Cambridge College in California as well. Additionally, she is a proud U.S. Air Force veteran. Dr. Black holds an undergraduate certificate and a master's degree in education from Cambridge College, a doctorate of education in organizational leadership from Pepperdine University, and has pursued additional doctoral studies in human and organizational development through Fielding University. In her newly expanded role, Dr. Black will continue her work with student success, and she will incorporate the additional responsibility of serving as the college's chief academic officer, providing leadership to the campus presidents and the district academic affairs division. Dr. Gates Black, we welcome you in your new role.
Thank you, Chancellor Hadley, and Mrs. Appleman, members of the board. I was thinking earlier today, I said, my goodness, those four years just flew by. But in that time, we have been able to do some amazing things, and I know that that would not have been possible without our faculty and staff and their willingness to embrace new ideas and new strategies. And I'm excited about the future and the work that we're going to do, and I look forward to continue to work with you, Chancellor, with the presidents, and the other members of the KEL, the faculty and staff, to continue to find ways to help our students to achieve their goals.
Thank you. I'll ask you, when you get home tonight, or tomorrow night, or Saturday night, to take time to go through your notebooks and look at all those wonderful things that our faculty and staff people are doing. We of course don't have time to go through all of them. I'm just going to highlight one item from each of the campuses tonight, starting with the Northeast Campus. Through a joint partnership between the Departments of Life Science and Student Services, an event was sponsored entitled "You and Your Future in the Biomedical Field." The committee chair was Dr. Caroline Hamilton, who is an associate professor of biology, and the event targeted science students to make them aware of what neighboring institutions offered to launch them into their desired career. They had 180 students from the Northeast Campus participating, and immediately following the kickoff, students visited with institutions to discuss their degree plans. So my assumption is institutions were on-site there as well to work with them. Is that right, Dr. Dodge? Very good, very good. So all of the campuses were invited to be there. Also, our Northwest Campus, instructor Jacob Smith, representing the TCC Fire Service Training Center, has won the 2014 Texas Association Fire Educators George Hughes Instructor of the Year Award. Congratulations to Jacob Smith. On our South Campus, Joshua Good, who is the department chair of Fine Arts, exhibited his artwork at the Calico Art Gallery in Brooklyn, New York from February 7th through March 16th, 2014. Mr. Good was also funded by the Faculty Academy to complete a large public project and to provide public lectures in Croatia. So they are, we are reaching out all over the world. On our Southeast Campus, I want to call your attention to the annual Scholastic Summit that was hosted on March 28th and 29th, by celebrating its commitment to building a culture of evidence with faculty and staff. The session focused on methods in which campus faculty, staff, and administrators use data to inform decisions about engaging students, promoting excellence in teaching, creating collaborative partnerships in learning, and sustaining the dynamic college experience. More than 100 participants enjoyed the many sessions offered. The keynote address was given by Dr. Alan Sacks, a political science professor at UT, and also an adjunct for TCC, and Dr. Kimberly Beatty, our own Associate Vice Chancellor for Student Success. On our, in our continuing education area, I wanted to call your attention to our own board member, Dr. Gwendola Morrison, and Nita Halliburton, who is coordinator of special projects on our Southeast Campus, recognized by the Destiny Point Church in Arlington for their work in the Arlington and Tarrant County community. This honor was given to them in honor of Women's History Month. On our Trinity River Campus, the Beta Sigma Mu chapter of Phi Theta Kappa earned numerous awards at the 2014 Texas Regional Convention, held at the Hyatt Regency Hotel in Houston, February 27th through March 2nd. Chapter accolades include distinguished honors in the Action Project, the College Project Award of Merit, Congeniality Award, five-star chapter award, and recognition as a top Texas chapter. And our student, you heard from him last month, Nathaniel Peoples, was named to the Hall of Honor for Members. Speech instructor Candace Eldridge received the Horizontal Advisor Award. Under Academic Affairs and Student Success, we signed an articulation agreement with the University of Phoenix on March 19th, 2014. Just shows you how we are branching out. Our first goal in 2015 is to provide additional opportunities for our students to be successful. You heard me bragging a couple of months ago about the outstanding partnership we have with Texas Tech University, where our nurse, excuse me, our teacher education programs can complete their baccalaureate degree in one year and get a lot of support financially to do that, in conjunction with the partnership with Fort Worth ISD. That is really, really great, of course, the best part about it, once they get their training finished in December, they'll finish their two years and one year by going full-time year-round, and they have a job waiting for them at Fort Worth ISD in January of 2015. So that's a story I'm spreading everywhere, and so we all about agreements, articulation agreements. Also, the academic affairs program development completed the largest and most comprehensive curriculum update, revision, and addition process in the history of the college. Over 60 degree programs were revised, six new degree programs were approved, and 13 academic certificates, 49 new career and technical certificates were added to the college offerings. And that's a hallelujah, as far as I'm concerned, absolutely, because it gives us other opportunities to help our students have options. And one of the things we're trying to do really, really well here is build more certificates that will require less than a two-year associate degree, but to build those certificates so that they are stackable, one on top of the other to the other, until students get where they really want to go. In our corporate services area, the Workforce Commission just recently awarded another partnership grant in recognition of the Manufacturing Consortium with us, in the tune, to the tune of $889,886. And as you know, that is a great win for the people of Tarrant County, as well as for Tarrant County College. And speaking of that, I'll tell you, because I will go through a lot of those things in my report, when I was in Washington, DC last week, for the American Association of Community Colleges, our own Work Solutions Director, Judy- McDonald, thank you. Judy McDonald and I were asked to give a repeat of a presentation that we had made to a smaller group of ACC people back last November. And it was at the time when President, Vice President Joe Biden was going to speak, and people were lining up so that they would make sure they get in to get a seat. We assumed, we went into our session, it was right before that, we said, we won't have anybody here. They're going to all go and to get in line to hear the Vice President. We had a room full of people. We were really surprised. People are really interested in knowing how we work so well together, and how we do so many things together, and they're taking it all over the country.
She mentioned that at the board meeting yesterday.
Yes, yes, it was very good for the workforce solutions, as well as for Tarrant County College. Under Student Success, I wanted to tell you about a model for interacting and supporting students having been implemented, the online advising with the chat feature, case management of students who have earned a D or an F in previous semesters, online new student ground advising, and pre-assessment activities, opportunities all for the students who can do online success workshops. A very special thank you to Dr. Kim Beatty, because she leads all of this work, and she is determined that she's going to do everything she can to make sure every student gets help, wherever help is needed, and if students can't come to our campuses and go to the labs to get help, they can get some help online. And so far, for this year, we have had 553 students advised online. 346 were advised the semester before, and so that we are increasing in our growth for online advisement. This is one of, another one of the things that we have to do to keep ourselves in line to be a 21st century community college. Community colleges today look very different from the way they looked even 10 years ago. Community colleges today look very different from the way they looked even 10 years ago. Under Mr. Gates' area, we're reporting that the South Campus Student Leader, Roman Satello, won a $500 scholarship as a part of an essay that he presented in the South Campus Essay Contest to be utilized toward his gateway courses. That's a, an incentive for students to get out of developmental education, and we call gateway courses, those college-level, those first college-level courses that they must pass. And all of you knew about that because we get special funding from the coordinating board when they do that. But he overcame a lot of challenges and is applying his perseverance skills to make sure that he gets through. Under Angela Robinson's area, Kirk Driver, who is the Manager of Emergency Management, earned recognition from the International Association of Emergency Managers by being among the group of professionals who have maintained their certification... I lost my place. Who have maintained their certifications as a Certified Emergency Manager designation, a CEM. So a very special congratulations to Kirk Driver. Now, those are the accolades. Another thing I want to point your attention to, the many, many media pieces that you have in your notebook. I didn't see one that I meant to bring off my desk from last Saturday. I don't see it here, maybe I've missed it. Cheers. We had two sets of cheers in last Saturday's newspaper, and one came, I said, "We have the biggest cheerleader in the world."
No chalk.
Ms. Louise Appleman, who writes in these great, the great cheer to all of our students who made...
The Collegian.
The Collegian Awards. We've got awards for their Collegian newspaper.
Anyone here from the Collegian tonight? Stand up.
Stand up, congratulations.
They were named the best non-daily college newspaper in the universe, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. And there is an article about it, but we also got the cheers in the Fort Worth Star Telegram. And I don't know about you, but I try to read cheers every Saturday, and I read the cheers in the cheer, but the first line, if it says "Tarrant County College," I keep reading, where there's cheers or jeers. And then the second cheer in there was written by another person, not outside of the college, I think, and I cannot remember who it was, so...
Well, there was one not in Saturday's paper, but yesterday, I sent it to you this morning from the Director of the Imagination Celebration Hairy Impaired Program, and Trinity River Campus hosted them, and she was thanking all of you, Ms. Shepherd and Mr. Munoz, for your hospitality and such a great facility.
Very good. The final thing I'll report to you is off my monthly report. I mentioned earlier that I met with Superintendent Dansby. I think I said it was yesterday, but I think it was Tuesday when we met. And as you know, Dr. Jordan is leading the way for an early college high school on our South Campus for Fort Worth ISD. And Superintendent Dansby is very ecstatic about being able to start that school in the fall of 2015. So we'd met yesterday, a couple of days ago, with Superintendent and his main academic person, with Dr. Jordan, and we need to talk about what that looks like, where we are along the process. And our next step is to get with Nina Petty and her team to look at the Southeast Campus school, to see just how much of that we can overlay onto the land on South Campus. And so we're very, very excited about the partnership that we're developing there. And then Dr. Jordan is also working on an early college high school that he's hoping to open this fall, but a different model, it's called a school within the school, with the Everman ISD, and he will have an opportunity to tell you more about that. We are very excited and very focused on helping our ISDs with their students to get them to be more successful while they're in high school when they come to us. And I think I've mentioned before, our early college high school on Northwest Campus, which was our first, led the way, has a number of students who are gonna graduate next month with their associate degrees. And I heard just yesterday that there may, we may have one, but I'm not sure that's true, Dr. Ferguson from TABs, who may be graduating as well. I'm not sure if that's, do you know if that's for certain? Have that, that... Well, and so while I'm talking about early college high schools, you know, Dr. Darlage is opening the Early College High School on Northwest this fall.
Northeast.
Excuse me, Northeast. And then, of course, Dr. Coppola opening his on Southeast this fall. And the interesting thing, so far, the Early College High School on Northwest Campus, it started out in whatever space Dr. LeBlanc could find, and she's made it into a very livable situation for now. We're hoping that we're gonna get to move in better space very, very soon. Dr. Ferguson, Early College High School, started off off-site, and now we have 11th graders coming in this fall, and they're ready to come to the Trinity River Campus with the hope that we'll have all four years on Trinity very soon. Dr. Darlage's Early College High School is gonna start out by taking the district, the district facilities building, and it's being renovated, I think they've started already as we speak, to get ready for, that's with the HEB. No, Colville, Grapevine-Colville, with the Grapevine-Colville ISD. And of course, Dr. Coppola's is with the Arlington ISD. So we're moving on with a lot of initiatives to touch our communities wherever we can and to bring more students into Tarrant County College so that they can be successful. Our goal is to find success at some level for every student who comes to us. That's our goal. That's a big one. TCC Connect is going full steam. One of the things that we discussed today with the JCC was just that, we're moving really fast, and as we move fast, sometimes the communications again don't come to exactly where we want them to be, but at the end of the day, we're certainly expecting that it's going to go extremely well. There will be additional opportunities for students to go to college just on the weekend, get their degree by going just on the weekend, and get that degree within 18 months. And we are really, really excited about that part. I think I mentioned, we intend to have one cohort in weekend college that is going to be dual-language, that second language will be Spanish, and students will be taught in both English and Spanish for a portion of their work with us. We're expecting that's going to increase not just retention, but also the success of those students in that program. We're also looking at, through TCC Connect, doubling the number of dual-credit high school students we have. We're serving over 4,000 students now, and I'm hoping at some point, fairly soon, we'll get up to 8,000 students there. And of course, we're looking at how we can enhance our e-learning too, so that we can get students who are really ready to learn online. The one thing that we're not, none of us really is happy about with our online learning, and that is the success rate of the students who sign up for e-learning courses is not where we want it to be. We're working to try to get it at least equal to the face-to-face. The difficulty there comes from having students enrolling courses who are not prepared for online courses, and it's our responsibility, we think, to help them go to the face-to-face courses rather than the online courses. So that's gonna be another big job for us, but we'll get that done. So Madam President, that concludes my report, except I'll come back because I overlooked a very important person in the room. I have not met her yet, so I'm looking forward to this. Mark McLendon has a new staff introduction. Sorry, Mr. McLendon.
Sorry. Good evening. I'd like to introduce Ms. Lizzie Brannan. So let me tell you a little bit about Lizzie. Ms. Lizzie comes from PricewaterhouseCoopers, where she was a senior tax accountant. She also worked as an accountant for Cash America, and she's also worked for APESI Company for a total of five years. She is a certified public accountant, and she was selected as the outstanding candidate by the Texas Board of Public Accountants, where she received the high, 10 highest scored in the state of Texas.
NASA's awarding that, wow!
That's very great. Lizzie graduated with a Master of Science and from, her master's is from the University of Texas at Arlington, and she also has a bachelor's, and she had the low GPA in her bachelor's of 3.9 and in her master's of 3.8. Her honors and activities as TBSA Outstanding Candidate, she is a member of the American Institute of CPAs, the Texas Society of Public Accountants, Beta Alpha Sci, I like that, that's what I did when I was in university, so I think that's a great organization, and she's recipient of the Texas Society of CPA Accountant, and she has Excellence Award of 2010. She will be working for Ms. Chang and...
Welcome, welcome, Ms. Brannan.
Thank you very much. What he didn't mention is that I'm also a TCC alumni.
Oh, right!
I attended the South Campus, and really, I truly believe that the foundation that I received at TCC really helped me to achieve everything else. When I started at TCC, I didn't know that I wanted to be an accountant when I grew up, and it was the advisors who sent me to the Career Services Office, who gave me the test that showed me that I scored really high for accounting, and then my first accounting classes, my professors, you know, they're the ones who all helped me to form the goals and then to give me the foundation that I need to achieve the goals. And so I am really excited to be back at TCC and to support the organization that has played such a big role in my life. Yeah, thank you.
Welcome. And I said, "Welcome home." We're glad you're here.
Yes. Please allow me to share two things. This past Monday, well, Monday a week ago, I had the privilege of taking a bus tour with the Fort Worth Association of Realtors, which is the real estate professional trade organization for historically black real estate brokers. Some of you may know, my husband has been a licensed broker for 53 years. And so we were touring housing developments across the county. We went to a development in the Crowley ISD, and as the rep, was the sales representative was telling us about the property and all of the wonderful amenities, she started to talk about the wonderful Crowley ISD School District, and she said, "Another great plus is that you can go to Tarrant County College right here in the Crowley School District at the Tarrant County College South Campus Crowley Center." So I wanted to share that. Of course, she said, "You know, the schools are the lifeblood of the community, and we're so fortunate to have a college right here in this housing development." So that was wonderful. She didn't know, you know, it was on the board, but that was a great plus. And the second thing I want to say is that tonight represents a completion of 38 years of service, of elected service on the board, and I just wanted to share that timeline with you. I know I don't look it, I don't feel it, and I'm equally excited about completing the next five years of elected service. So, thank you. You've all been a wonderful part of my service. The only thing I have is I wanted to commend with great enthusiasm all of you who were involved in the Student Success Summit last week. What a pleasure to spend the day with you. So many faculty at the different workshops, I call them, but my favorite part, of course, was the students' displays around the convention center. We are so fortunate and so, we have a lot to be proud of, and thank all of you. I know that took a lot of time and effort to pull all of that together, but hopefully it was worth it, and I congratulate you on a very successful event. Any other comments from the board? If not, we will go into executive session for deliberation of real property, Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code, deliberation on personnel matters, Section 551.074, Texas Government Code, and consultation with our attorneys, Section 551.071, Texas Government Code. We are adjourned. Our next meeting is May 15th, and the next day... The 15th, and then the next day, we are having a board retreat. We are. Sorry, I've been misinformed. I'm being re-informed. What are we gonna do? The board, everything will happen on Friday, the 16th? Sorry, scratch that. Everything is happening on Friday, the 16th. Thank you for coming tonight.